I'd like to call the meeting in order. Ariel, would you call the roll, please?
Melissa Niles.
Here.
Travis Orbach.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Linda Varbel.
Here.
Howland Bill.
Here.
JR.
Here.
Deborah Dotson.
Here.
Bill Leek.
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our usual reminder, counsel, if you have any conflicts of interest, please let the council know before we vote. Need a motion to approve an amended agenda, and it will be to add new business item E. And that new business item, the handout in front of you, would be to acknowledge the notification of raffle from the Hot Springs Community Garden. Proceeds from the raffle will be used for further development of the garden. A drawing will be held on Friday, September 1st, 2023, between 3:30 and 6:00 p.m. at the Hot Springs Farmers Market.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda, adding item E, raffle. I'm sorry, under new business item E.
Did you get that, Ariel?
Yes.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve the minutes from the July 5th council meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 5th council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. A motion to approve the bills in between.
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $254,862.84.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the current claims.
I make a motion to approve the current claims in the amount of $258,612.92.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Communications from the public. And a reminder that we ask everyone to try to keep your comments to five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jason Midgley, 27880 Jenny Road. I am the president of the Hot Springs Area Pickleball Club. And I'm just not pretty much read verbatim on here so that I don't miss anything. Hot Springs Area Pickleball Club is a 501(c)(3) South Dakota State Incorporated club, put together to have a collective voice and work together with the city of Hot Springs for increasing the enjoyment of pickleball inside of the community. I am here at the request of the city of Hot Springs Park and Recreation Committee after bringing an official proposal to them at the last Parks meeting. The Butler Park tennis and basketball courts were last resurfaced in 2017 at a cost of $28,500. From my knowledge, a grant was received for $21,000 from the Land, Water, and Conservation Fund. However, there was an additional project with an unknown cost for new lighting on the Little League field. The assumption would be that the cost of the two projects would have been about $42,000 and that the grant was most likely a 50/50 grant. There is some assumption there. The balance was paid by the city, from my understanding. That year, the Parks and Recreation budget for non-building improvements was set at Six years later, brings us to now. The courts are getting to a point of needing a resurfacing job. While these courts are originally meant to be tennis courts, for the purpose of tennis, they sit mostly empty. The current surface has lines for pickleball, and that is the predominant sport being played currently. Pickleball has become the fastest-growing sport in the nation. Colleges are creating teams. Pro-level matches are nationally televised, and is on track to becoming an Olympic sport. Committees all over our nation are making pickleball a priority in their parks and recreation plans. In our own state of South Dakota, the city of Pierre, just last week poured concrete for new courts, where the city is actually paying the construction cost of $294,000. While donations are being used on top of that from the club there and private donors for other additional amenities. Rapid City is currently converting Wilson Park from tennis to pickleball, as many of you have probably seen on the news. Our proposal, as seen in the packets that may lay before you, Misty said she might print them out. Some people have already seen them. Do you guys, did you guys get it? Very good. Or have been shown? Oh, geez. Okay. I'll start this part. Our proposal, as seen in the packets that may lay before you, have been shown to you recently, or is the idea of resurfacing our own Butler Park tennis courts to a new multi-use area. The result would be three dedicated pickleball courts, along with one tennis court. Currently, it's two tennis courts that are lined for pickleball. The proposal would change the color scheme to a more traditional setup also. As you can see in the proposal, it would be blue, green, and a maroon color. We would like to approach this project as a DIY item, with the permission and help from the city. A few of us have knowledge and firsthand practice in concrete flatwork and court resurfacing. I just recently got done resurfacing two private courts inside town, and people that would be helping me are ones that would have done that, helped participate in that. And I believe that we are more than capable of creating a product that we can all be proud of, at a significant savings to the city. The products we have chosen to complete the project are from the same manufacturer as used during the previous resurfacing project in 2017. We are asking for the city's blessing to do this project as a DIY project, and also asking for your consideration during the upcoming budgetary meetings. Our detailed estimates for the completion of resurfacing the tennis courts and installing all new nets, that's for three pickleball courts and one tennis court, is $12,500. The club has already received donations of $2,400 in materials to be used, and therefore we have a balance request in full or partial to the city of Hot Springs of $10,100 for the completion of this project for spring of 2024, along with some additional minor repairs as outlined in the proposal. When factoring in the previous cost of $28,500, that was the cost of resurfacing the courts in 2017, this comes at a bargain when factoring in inflation. The breakdown based on square footage for the 2017 project would have meant that $17,712 was the cost of the project just for the tennis side, not including the basketball side. While we do go, while we could go after additional grants, we are hoping that the city of Hot Springs City Council and the Budgetary Committee will get behind this project and factor in the value of our labor, current materials that we have on hand, and the benefit of the community. The mayor himself has spoken about bang for the buck with Parks money, and I believe that this is the definition of that. In the future, we have ideas of bench seating, sun shades, and LED lighting that we could, would like to concentrate our grant and donation efforts towards in the future, pretty much hoping that we never have to actually ask the city for extra funding after we've got the courts resurfaced. So to recap, our organization is looking for, A, the approval of resurfacing the current courts as a DIY project versus going out and getting contract bids, and B, the funding allocated as part of the 2024 budget of $10,100, or at least part of. The Hot Springs Pickleball Club, with its members of ages 15 to 85, would highly appreciate your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. Counsel? Any questions?
I have one question. Andrea Powers gave me a call, wanted to know your number to talk about pickleball. Did you have a conversation, and what was that conversation about?
Correct. Andrea Powers with the.
Shetco.
With Shetco, which I'm Southern Hills.
Economic Development.
Economic Development Corporation.
Right.
Got ahold of me.
Yes, sir.
And she got ahold of me because the city of Edgemont is having a push for pickleball courts also. They currently have a tennis court slash basketball type setup. From satellite views, I have not seen it in person. It looks to be that maybe it doesn't have any surfacing, it just has some lines, so it's just blank concrete. And I am actually going to go out with her next week to look at their project, to help her try to figure out the layout of what they could do. And then she mainly wanted to have an idea of what all the sizes and measurements were, and I had a very good conversation with her. But I can't guarantee funding from anybody.
Right. Oh, thank you, sir.
Jason, I just want to say thank you for such a complete proposal. It really doesn't lend to a lot of questions for clarification, because it is very complete.
You would think I was a contractor for 20 years. Good job. Thanks.
Hey, Jason, I've got a few questions. So if the city approves your proposal, how long until you would be, the court would be ready?
The, we would.
What's timeframe?
Because of needing the approval to do the work, and then also possibly going into Budgetary Committees if they were to go after it, we would look at doing the work in the spring of 2024 now.
Next year.
Because everything keeps on getting pushed farther and farther back. And so we would probably end up having to do it in the month of May, probably mid-May, because we would need the temperatures to be above 50 degrees for 24 hours and watching the rain before we can do any, actually laying any surface material down.
Okay. And another question I have, you talk about popularity, and I don't disagree that it's popular. Is there any sort of idea, like is there a South Dakota or a local league forming? Like are you going to have league play?
We.
Is there going to be some competition?
Yes. So as soon as we have courts built, we would love to host tournaments. Currently, many of us have been going up to Rapid City for tournaments. There's a Spearfish one that I'll be going to, and probably several people from here will be going to. That's still two months down the road. But Rapid is having, constantly having tournaments now. We technically can't do it. We've talked about trying to do something. We had even talked about doing something in here in the Mueller Center. Nothing has come together. We do have the people to do it. There's quite a few players here. And hopefully, when we start, because we've already had people from Rapid saying, hey, you know, as soon as you guys want to do tournaments, let us know, and we'll come down with the idea of courts being built.
Right.
And that hopefully will bring, you know, hotel rooms and restaurants and hopefully help with the economic development.
Sure. And then another question I had, will these be paid to play tournaments, or will there be fees charged to the public for?
Usually, somebody coming to spectate, they would not have to pay. Most round robins, the fees are $30 to $40 per person. So sometimes you come in and sign up for a tournament by yourself, and then you get rotated in, and you kind of accumulate the points all to yourself, even though they're doubles games. And then if you're, like the big tournament in Rapid, that'll have probably 130 people, and I think it's August 18th and 19th, whatever the Saturday and Sunday is, they'll have about 130 people. And that's $40 per person for creating a team. So my wife and I will be putting out 80 bucks to play in that one.
Okay. Sorry, I don't want to take too much time. I was just thinking of some of other questions. So would have, is this going to be in the evening also? Would we need to have lights and somebody watching all that?
Currently, there's lights there. The lights, I've never seen the bill to the city of how much the electric costs them, but I know that they're not the most efficient lights. They're, I think they're halogen lights. They take about 15 minutes to warm up. It used to be that they were shut off during the middle of the games because they shut up.
Right.
Shut off every 45 minutes, and you have to hit the reset button. Luckily, we don't have to do that anymore. However, if there were LED lights and they instantly come on, especially if they gave us a switch to actually just push button and turn them off when we walked off the courts, so we're not lighting up the entire town, then your electric bill would probably go down to very little.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Jason.
We just recently designated the courts, Paul Wittenberg Tennis Courts, and a plaque was put up. I understand you've had a conversation with the family?
Correct. I personally have not had a conversation with the family. One of our other board members did. It took a while to finally get ahold of her, but one of, Emily Moffett, who is our secretary, was able to chase her down and actually personally knew her before. And she had questions, and it really came down to believing that her father would probably have gotten behind pickleball, especially a little bit later, later in life, and also seen the popularity of the sport. And she's on board enough that she has actually offered to help us in the future with any grant proposals that were needed, if it came about, which eventually there's going to have to be grants, whether it's for the resurfacing, which we're hoping not for the resurfacing, but instead LED lights, windscreen for the fences, benches, and that all adds up. But she has definitely, and she has actually expressed an interest in learning how to play the game also. And we've also been reached out by a lady at the VA, through Gabby at first, but then she's actually talked to a couple other people with starting a training program, kind of a, I think it's more like a therapy type of setup there for the VA. So she has to be trained how to play pickleball so she can teach it also.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Jason, you had mentioned, I had made a comment about, you know, seeing if the city couldn't find some money to put towards this. If we could do that, is there still time for you to get it done this year?
There definitely could be time. As long as the product was available, we could probably definitely make the time.
Okay.
So we have enough material to do one 30 by 60-foot area, and then we just need the materials to do the balance, and of course, the nets. So pretty much the entire proposal, because when we originally were talking to Parks and Rec, when we had the materials to do the one court, even though I did not believe that we would be able to do just one phase and then move into a second phase later on, I started thinking that we were going to be able to, and then I was approached that that was not going to be able to happen. So that's where we came into wanting and needing the rest of the funding. So right now, we're sitting at about 20%. If you look at what we, what we're given, not including labor, for the project, it's about 20% of the total cost at this time.
Okay. Well, we'll take a look at what's left in the Parks budget for the remainder of the year, and see how those remaining dollars have been allocated by council for this year, and see if we can come up with something.
Highly appreciate it. All good?
Any other questions, counsel?
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Any other communications from the public? All right. On to council updates. Update on the road project, water and sewer?
Well, good evening. It was nice this morning, bright and early, to see a lot of the concrete crew was out ready for the big pour, and they did indeed lay quite a bit of concrete today. If you happened to drive down South Chicago Street, two different sections that were put in. So that's always encouraging to see some hard surface being put down, because that's the final product that now just has to expand out to curb and gutter and sidewalk and light posts and markings and all of those things. As far as the utilities part of things right now, we are not currently having any mains being replaced. The status of the project is such that the mains that remain to be replaced are everything going north from where they left off on North River Street. So we will not see any more, well, for a while, we will not see any more water or sewer main replacement, probably, possibly for the rest of the year unless they're able to get to some of the North River Street part of it. From a utility standpoint, what they have been doing in the past two weeks, you've probably noticed a lot of activity on the sidewalk area, or I guess I should say what was the sidewalk area on North River Street. Sidewalk has been pulled out in quite a few places, and they are doing the double Y clean-out taps for the sewers, for the sewer services, and also any additional, you know, like today, they replaced a piece of a lead service line, you know, that was now able to be, you know, accessed because of the sidewalk being gone. That will probably go on for maybe a few more days. They're, you know, they're almost to the south end there, close to the Police Department Building. Also, you will see some contractors for both Black Hills Energy and Golden West. They have utilities that they're going to be laying underneath that sidewalk that's on the east side of North River Street. Other than that, as far as the road project and what is related to utilities, there's no other, you know, there's no other utilities at this time. And I think that's pretty much my update. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Tracy, was it any of our utility work that was done on South Sixth at the Dip Bridge?
Oh, yes. Yes. Thank you. Yes. We had, part of it was the state and part of it was ours. The water main that comes across from Detroit needed to be lowered in anticipation of the realignment of Sixth Street, when they completely change, you know, how this approach comes off of the Sixth Street Bridge over here. So yes, that was completed last week, and then also they have been working on storm sewer coming across there. I did have an interesting question about a week ago. They had run across a, kind of like a bridge foundation, but it was further back up, you know, in the road. And we have a 1938 aerial photo of Hot Springs there at City Hall. If you've not noticed it before, it's kind of interesting to look at. And there was a bridge, because this actually was the state highway out here. This was Highway 71, which is now, you know, our Sixth Street, and then it turned on Galveston and connected. There was a bridge there. I think, best as I can tell, it was a regular AT grade level bridge. And then in 1952 or '54, I think, that's when they built the current Low Water Bridge. So anyway, they ran across some foundations from probably the previous generation of bridge. But yes, that, the water main part of it was ours. The storm sewer, of course, is a part of the state improvements.
Okay. It may not be ours or yours to answer, but I was contacted by a local business that was concerned about the length of time that the Dip Bridge has been closed and impacting the businesses. Do you know when that's going to be opened? The Dip Bridge is going to be open back up?
We may know more at tomorrow morning's informational meeting at the American Legion. Really do not know for sure.
Okay. I guess, would you ask that question?
Yeah, we'll, we'll ask that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the majority of us have received that call.
I got that call, too. If it is going to be extended, is there any way to put signage to direct them back to the bypass to get around somehow?
Our impression has been that it was going to be maybe a two or three-week closure, and we're pretty much about to that extent, you know?
But if it is going to be extended?
That would be a good, good idea.
Thanks, Tracy.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tracy? Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
If you were to hang around, there may be some questions on new business item B, the Bros Engineering Contract. All right. That takes us to Personnel. Going to get a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through C.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto new business. New business item A, authorize a finance officer to reinvest a maturing U.S. Treasury bond.
I make a motion to authorize the finance officer to reinvest a maturing U.S. Treasury bond at SD FIT 602-WATER-DSR into another U.S. Treasury bond with SD FIT for a six-month term at 5.22%.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant.
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for replacement of structure number 24-290-029, Minnetoga Bridge, project number BRO 80240023-1, PCN 09H3. Second.
Discussion?
Did we already do this? I thought we approved. What did we approve, and what makes this different?
This is actually approving the agreement with Bros Engineering to be the engineer of record for the project. And Bros is the same company that did the Jennings Bridge for us.
I got a question. I'm looking at number five, financing the project. The city will be 100% responsible for any ineligible project costs? So we've got that pretty tightened, tightened up?
Yes. In the original paperwork for this, that the last council saw, the dollars that were ineligible were identified. Off the top of my head, I don't remember those exact costs, but we can get them to you.
And then I was looking at number 13, funding availability. All right. Sorry, no, scratch that. I was looking, it looks like we have to spend the money first and then get reimbursed?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And we have enough cash to do that?
That's a finance question.
Okay.
Ariel?
Where is the total cost on this agreement?
I think it's 1.4 something million. I think we're, we get, we had to pay 20% of that, I think.
Five B, number I.
Yeah.
Cash on hand, I'm not real sure, but Misty's real smart with all that stuff, so I'm sure she'll figure out a way.
You could probably catch up with Misty when she comes back and ask her that question.
Yeah.
So we'll be.
She'll be more than happy to answer it.
We'll be responsible for the 20%, 1.4.
Thank you.
And I think our share comes around four.
It's about $429,000.
About $429?
I think that's about, and change. That comes out of the 212 fund, and there's. And that comes out of the 212 fund, and there's about $2 million in that right now.
Thank you.
And hell, it's not related to the contract itself, but you had a question about the patchwork that's necessary on the bridge. So while Tracy's here, he was one of the folks that accompanied Bros to take a look at what would be necessary and what they recommended.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I'm thinking, Mr. Mayor, I was just curious if there are drawings from the repair work on the bridge.
Your question was if Bros Engineering was doing the, like a drawing for the, just the repair work, the patch?
Yes, sir.
They made a recommendation of the material that we should use. Really, it's just a matter of putting a plate underneath it to hold the high-strength fast-set concrete and fill the hole. So it's really not a, it's not really something that they would have a reason to provide a drawing for us. We'll have to clean it out, have to get, you know, clean it and cut it so that it's, the rebar is exposed for the patch material to properly adhere to. And we do have to put some support, some plating on the bottom side so that it'll hold together. But yes, they made a recommendation of how we should, the material that we should use to fix it.
Good. Thank you, Tracy.
It's my understanding it'll be fixed in-house with our crew?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there an anticipated completion date for that?
The bridge or the fix?
The fix.
Actually, about as soon as possible. We, Street Maintenance Department did get the material last week, so it's just a matter of, you know, when we can pull some of the crew. And of course, they have to take a lift and go down underneath, you know, underneath the bridge and, you know, put the plate up on the bottom. That will be, that and the cleaning of it preparation will take more time than actually just putting the repair material in. So hopefully, in another week or two, it'll be done.
I think we'd looked at, I know we'd looked at this bridge on future dates, but with the hole being created, I think it kind of bumped us up on the list.
We're hoping that from the big grant program and the point system, that this, it creates a bigger, a greater sense of urgency on behalf of the funding decision makers.
Okay, thank you.
But we're probably still 2025 for actual reconstruction of the bridge.
That's what I was figuring.
Yeah, because we're getting a lot more big trucks coming across that bridge, and it really bounces when you drive across.
Mm-hmm. It bounces when you walk across it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy.
Anything else with the bridge?
And to Tracy's point about getting equipment down on the river, I just want to let the public know that I recognize there's a sensitivity about equipment in the river, but it is going to be necessary to get a front-end loader or something under there so that the guys can get underneath the bridge, place the plate and the support materials to keep that plate in so that the patch material can be put in the hole and allowed to harden. To the public, yes, there will be at least one piece of heavy equipment in the river to get our bridge repaired.
And if I may, just because I can't stand to be that inaccurate, our cost for the bridge replacement is $472,613. The original estimate is it'll finish in the third quarter at 25, and that'll come out of the 212 fund, and June balance was $3,289,200. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Now, that's not Misty quality answers, but I did get those numbers from Misty.
I could have looked in front of the counting, but I can't access any of my, my stuff.
Subject to correction.
Plus 10%.
Subject to being whacked over the head by Misty for inaccuracies.
Good luck, Bill.
All right, onto our next new business, item C, approve new airport ground lease agreement.
Make a motion to approve the new airport ground lease agreement?
Second.
Discussion. And Bill, if you would start us off, and I believe we also have a pilot here that would like to speak to the council?
Yeah, we've worked long. If you've, if any of you have a good memory, about every Airport Advisory Committee report that I've had for the last 12 to 18 months has had something about the land lease agreement. So we have been working a long time. And I've asked Gary Tellkamp, who's a member of the Airport Advisory Committee. So Gary, you've got some comments?
Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff, my name is Gary Tellkamp. I live at 441 South Sixth Street here in Hot Springs. I'm a pilot, an aircraft owner, and a member of the Airport Advisory Committee. I'd like to publicly and for the record, thank the mayor and Councilman Lukens for all of their time and hard work in drafting the proposed hangar ground lease. The president of the Airport Advisory Committee had a scheduling conflict, so I'm here in his absence. The Airport Advisory Committee supports the proposed hangar ground lease, and I urge your approval. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I will respond to any questions that you might have.
Something that was brought up today in our Admin Finance, there was talk about this proposal and how lease agreements last for many years, upwards of 30 to 50 years for people to lease the land and build a hangar on it, and that the FAA doesn't like those 50-year agreements, they like them a little less than that, and that there was some issues with the pilots about that.
And, go ahead, Gary.
The FAA does not, the FAA does not have a problem with 50-year leases. So wherever that information came from is not accurate.
And, but, well, we've worked this out, and that's why you have a 30-year plus one 10-year extension in this land lease agreement.
So my common sense question, in my mind anyway, is, you know, can they just not sign another 30-year agreement when that time's up?
And that's realistically, that's likely what will happen, is if the structure is in good condition at the end of 40 years, and the way they're building things now, there's a good chance that that a hangar may be in good condition and worthy of another lease at that point. And so, yeah, they could just, with the administration that's in place at that point, say, I want to do another 30-year lease. Or if it's, if there's an inspection made of the hangar and it says, that thing looks like it's only good for 20 more years, then it'd be a 20-year lease.
Okay.
But, yeah, there's, there's nothing that would stop that.
Okay.
I've got a review of aeronautical lease agreements right here in my hand. So when I asked Bill, does this satisfy what's in here? And he said yes, so.
In fact, one of the things the mayor did is, in one of the review copies in blue font, everything that was required by that document that, Chapter 12, that Larry held up, we made sure that everything, that if, if an FAA review took place, everything they would look for, we made sure we had in our agreement. And, and it's there.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Gary?
Yes.
I'm looking at the, the last draft of the lease, and you're okay with the 30 plus the option for an additional 10 instead of the two 10s?
Well, thank you for the question. My preference would be 30 plus two 10s for a total of 50. And I think Spearfish right now is at 20 plus two 10s, so that's 40. And I think Sturgis is at either 30 or 40. And so you might say, well, you know, Spearfish and Sturgis is at 30 or 40, why shouldn't we stay there? Well, that's the exact point. If they're at 40, we should be at 50 and draw people into Hot Springs. We should be a little bit better than they are. And so, thank you for that question. Is that responsive?
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? So to Debra's question about the 50 years, what we had talked about at Admin Finance today is, depending on how you restate it, Gary's correct, that the FAA does not say you cannot have 50-year leases. They are not excited about 50-year leases. And in the language that the FAA typically uses, they refer to reversion, that at the end of the lease, once the property has been properly amortized, then it should come back to the city. But the whole idea behind this is to offer a service to pilots. We want them here. We want to be able to generate a revenue off of our land. So when we started out at the 30 plus two 10s, that was at 50. But again, recognizing that FAA doesn't say no, but possibly draws attention to ours having the 50 years in there. So we backed off to 40. Gary makes a good point that if we offer a longer lease than other communities, that makes us more favorable. This is the proposal in front of you. Any other questions? Ariel?
I have a small note that lines 100 through 103 are the same as 123 through 126. You guys have a paragraph in there twice.
So 100 through?
Before it's finalized. Through 103.
100 through 103 are the same as which ones?
123 through 126.
Yes, duplicate.
I think it got moved and didn't get struck.
Figured so.
Thank you for that. Bill had mentioned that this has been through a lot of versions. He gave me more credit than I deserve. This is all of his time, or the majority of his time, Gary's time, Shane's time, a lot of the folks on the Airport Advisory got together to put this, get this in front of you. So we'll note those changes, and if council approves it tonight, then we'll just make the appropriate edits and get it removed.
Thank you. If I can just make one further comment. The 30 plus two 10s is just a selling point. The Airport Committee is fine with the 30 plus 10, but it's just kind of a little sugar on the, just to kind of entice people in, which I think is good for the airport, I think it's good for the community, and it's good for the people that are going to be leasing hangar ground space. But we're fine, but I just kind of, it's just a selling point. And I'm out there promoting the Hot Springs Airport and Hot Springs. It just gives me another little tool.
The other thing we talked about a little bit today, Gary, is that there are airports out there that are moving away from general aviation friendly, and we want to position ourselves at a point where pilots will take a look at our lease, you can make a recommendation and say, come to Hot Springs. Do you feel this agreement is, puts us in that position?
I think it does. We've got great things happening at Hot Springs. We've got a shop out there, mechanics, I was out there today, and people are coming out of Wyoming, they're coming out of Nebraska, out of South Dakota. They're busy, they're bringing, you know, dollars into the community. And I know several people, myself included, that are looking at building a hangar at Hot Springs, and I see good, good things happening. It's really turned into a fun place, and I was out there a couple Saturdays a week ago, and we had all sorts of activity out there going on. And people are relocating their planes to places like, not Custer so much, but Sturgis and Hot Springs, Hot Springs is just a little bit further away, about 15 minutes from Rapid Sea people. And I just want to, you know, anything helps all. Any tools you want to put in my tool chest would be appreciated, but I'm okay with what we got too.
All right.
Yeah, thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we, okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. So we're looking at 30 years plus 10, or are we looking at 30 years plus 10 plus 10?
Plus 10, 1 10.
Okay.
And they can always re-up for another 30. It just, I don't see a problem.
The drawback would just be waiting another two weeks to make those changes then, right? To add another 10?
No, if the maker of the motion would like to amend it?
Okay.
To include two 10-year terms? And if the second would agree to that, that could be done tonight?
Do we need a motion to change that, to get rid of that paragraph, that extra?
It's semantics, I think.
No, I don't think we do on that one. Just recognizing that it's duplicate, and we'll need to make sure it gets removed if council approves the agreement.
I think I'll leave my motion as, as it is. We've worked long, long and hard on this, and the motion stands.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, council. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks for all your hard, hard, long efforts.
Excited to talk about something else now.
Onto new business, item D, approve a contract change order number one.
Make a motion to approve contract change order number one with Atlas Exteriors for the repair of underlying conditions revealed with removal of existing roof and to provide a proper drainage pattern for the new roof, increasing contracted price by $28,799.87 to a new total of $253,798.87.
Second.
Discussion.
Tracy, you had mentioned exactly what that was about, correct? If you've got a second to tell the council?
Thank you, sir.
And it, this is for the Civic Center roof, which that's not actually clarified in the, in the motion. Atlas Exteriors is the company that's doing the, the flat roof, this roof that's over us here and the roof over the gymnasium. When these roofs were originally installed, they're, they were absolutely, you know, completely flat. And there are drawbacks to absolutely flat roofs because, you know, any kind of undulation in the surface at all, and you've got, you've got standing water. So it appears, and I think Larry probably vouched for this, that it appears to me that in the roofing industry, there is a trend towards getting these, I wish I could remember the technical term.
I call it a cricket.
A cricket, okay. It makes just a slight increase, you actually kind of get a little bit of pitch to the roof. And of course, that takes added material, but what it does, of course, is it gets it so that you don't have the ponding issues in the future on your membrane roof. So it's a very, it probably buys you an extra, who knows how many years of durability of your roof. So certainly something that we took, you know, is highly recommended. And also, they found, you know, there was some deteriorated material underneath, and of course, until you open a roof up, those are things that you don't know until you, until you have it. But they're in progress right now, you know, the past few days have been working the roof, and the metal contractor will be on board shortly. And of course, that's what everybody's going to notice, is because all this front area will all be fresh, and it'll kind of look like the Civic Center's new again.
Is the flat roof metal or is it a composite?
It's a membrane. It's actually a.
It's rubberized roofing material.
Yeah, it's a rubberized, and it's white. So if you fly over it in an airplane, it'll be white.
And that white helps to reflect the sun off, so it cools down.
Oh, yeah, your cooling costs in the summer are dramatically reduced by going with a white roof. Plus, you know, as you know, anything that gets hot, I mean, any kind of a rubber material, heat is an enemy for it. So if it's black, I mean, it can, it can reach, you know, 150, 160 degrees Fahrenheit, you know, out there in the sun, whereas the white will be about the same temperature as the air.
And this is covered by our insurances that we got, correct?
Yes, yes, yeah, that's correct. Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item E. Acknowledge a notification of raffle from the Hot Springs Community Garden.
Make a motion to approve the notification of the raffle drawing sponsored by the Hot Springs Community Garden to be held on September 1st, 2023, at the Hot Springs Farmers Market on Friday between 3:30 and 6:00.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. All right, that takes us to committee reports. Administrative and Finance, JR. Melissa?
The Admin Finance Committee met today at 1 o'clock here at the Mueller Center. Present were Mayor Bob Nelson, Councilwoman Deb Johnston, Co-Chair Melissa Niles, and Chair JR Huddleston. Old Business, additional costs related to water, wastewater replacement road project, ongoing review and discussions necessary, funding for water wastewater overages, potential end-of-year inter-fund loan transfer, delayed mid-year transfers for the water wastewater. No significant changes, and more info is required. Item 2, discuss selling land. City owns 4.14 acres adjacent to Simon Quarry near Evergreen Cemetery. Excuse me. General government, mayor was contacting Simon. And the mayor contacted Kroll and was advised that there's approximately 89,000 ton of material at approximately a dollar per ton. Item B, 7-plus or minus acres north of Hayden property, Hot Springs Canyon water replat. And only offer for buildable piece for sale or move forward as a surplus property. Item C, 100-plus acres near the Hot Brook Canyon pump station. Water, not meadow area. Rocky Mountain, we're looking to the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, Leah Burgess. The 4.14 acres, oh, I said that. Items B and C, we're not going to have any action on those taken. Item 3, review utility fees. Must set new rates for 2024 and beyond. Casey Burris, project manager, technical assistance provider Midwest Assistance Program. 1.9% or 2% increase to rates. We're hold for mystery returns as further information is needed. Item 4, review discussion proposal changes addition to city Hot Springs personnel policies, clothing, TikTok, paid night differential, overtime clarification for exempt employees, exempt employee use of leave, flexible work arrangements, remote work, travel expenses, work on a holiday clarification, and return of city property. And City of Hot Springs Safety Manual, clarifying PPP standards. We're holding this or awaiting further discussions. New business, item 1. Steve Weenya, Historic Preservation Grant Ideas. Sorry, Steve, I don't think you were, if you're listening, you were invited to this meeting. But Deb Johnston gave us some good information. Deb Johnston advised that three state representatives will attend the October Historic Preservation Committee meeting to discuss funding and deadwood historical funding. Anything more, Deb, on that?
That's it right now.
Okay. Number 2, Mayor Nelson, per diem rates. Per diem rates are being discussed, state and GSA rates. Item 3, job description changes. Recreation Director, Southern Hills Golf Course, salaried employee. Development Coordinator name change. Remove valid South Dakota driver's license requirement from job descriptions were not necessary. That's on hold pending further discussion. 2024 dispatch agreement offered by Fall River County. We are working on a counter offer. On hold pending further discussion. Number 5, City Hall copier contract, five-year lease and service contract with Century Business Products on hold. Restaurant liquor license fee set 10 years ago, consider changing. That again is on hold. Review then discuss airport land lease agreement. That was approved tonight. Review monthly finance officer report. We did not have one. That's on hold. And the committee members items were none. We adjourned around 2:30 PM. I didn't look at my watch. Next meeting will be August 7th to 1 PM, Mueller Civic Center.
Melissa, do you have anything you want to add?
It was 2:44.
2:44. I took it round.
I assumed it would be 3.
Thank you.
Any questions for JR or Melissa? Thank you. Airport Advisory, Travis?
The Airport Advisory Committee met on Thursday, July 7th, 2023, 8:30 AM at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport. Members present were Shane Miller, Mark Backsbaum, Gary Tillcamp, Petra Wilson. Employees present were Rick Breitenbach and Tracy Bastian. Elected officials present were Alderman Travis Orbach and Alderman Bill Lukens. Charlie Baker from KLJ Engineering was there, and also Les Godlewski from the public. The agenda was adopted as published. In communications from the public, Les Godlewski stated he would like to be considered for a backup to the airport manager to assist airport patrons in the absence of the airport manager. He is also waiting for a T-hanger and concerned on the progress of the T-hangers. The airport manager update, the T-hanger has some progresses being made, but progress continues to lag. KLJ will set up a meeting with the contractor and the city to discuss the lack of progress. The monthly fuel sales for June were 2,325 gallons. The monthly flight operations included 100 operations plus numerous National Guard helicopter operations in June and 13 balloon launches with four landings in June. The hanger utilization, the city hanger was at 100%, and the old hanger was at 100%. Observations and opportunities for improvement. When mowing around the private hangars, the grass should be thrown away from hangars and away from aprons. It sticks to the hangars and causes the owners to have to sweep the aprons. In old business, the version of the land lease agreement that was provided to the council in the info-only side of the July 5th packets was discussed and will be provided to the committee, which we saw this evening. In new business, we discussed a commercial opportunity from a lady named Heather Copperman. She's seeking to establish a commercial operations in the commercial section of the airport. Capital Improvement Plan Proposal Review. 2024 Airport Pavement Maintenance. The city portion was $27,153. The 2024 Hanger Taxi Lane, the city portion was $24,944. The hanger approaches, the city portion was $92,200. Next meeting will be Thursday, August 3rd, and the meeting adjourned at 9:25 that morning. And I have an update. We, that meeting that was referred to, or we, Bill Lukens referred to the progress at that meeting on the hanger. And we had, kind of, it was an emergency. We had a quick meeting on Thursday, July, or sorry, Friday, July 14th, 2023, at 8:40 in the morning. Present were, this was to discuss the hanger progress. Present were Mayor Nelson, Alderman Travis Orbach, Charlie Baker from KLJ, Rick Breitenbach, Tracy Bastian, Rod Watts from High Country Erectors, and Chase Palo from High Country Erectors. And we all gathered for this meeting with High Country Erectors to discuss the issues delaying the building of the new hanger at the airport. The compaction tests on the base, the rock aggregate have been failing. AET was scheduled to show at 10:30 in the morning for compaction testing on the hanger's base rock aggregate. The base needs to pass a compaction test before concrete can be poured. Discussion was had about some of the standards set for compaction, such as the FAA and DOT. A schedule for the next benchmarks was discussed. Forms can be set one to two days after passing tests. Rebar can be set and tied in a week or two. And High Country Erectors agreed to send out a weekly progress report to the group via email. They agreed to that at the meeting. And other notes, a critical need is for High Country Erectors to get their payroll paperwork done and submitted. And once the compaction tests pass and forms and rebar are done, concrete could take an additional 28 days, but sometimes only needs a week to cure. And one other additional note, that afternoon, Friday, we had that meeting in the morning. And then that afternoon, Charlie from KLJ Engineers said they AET did some new testing, and this time the tests passed. The specifications called for 95% density for this material, and all of the tests met or exceeded this requirement. So, it looks like we're on, next, going to the forms part of the hanger.
Any questions for Travis?
Yeah, you mentioned the commercial thing, the lady. What did she want to do?
I think it was kind of a, she canceled. She was supposed to be there at the meeting, and then she said she had an emergency and couldn't be there. So, it was kind of hard to...
Know what she said.
Make a proposal or getting good for the business opportunity when you're not there to, so...
Okay, thank you, sir.
Rick had had a chance to talk with her, and I talked with her also. Pretty vague, but she's talking about some kind of warehouse delivery operation.
Oh, okay.
Without being able to meet with her personally and have her give us details.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this point, we're hopeful for the opportunity, but don't have any more specifics than that.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
Thank you, Travis.
Sure.
Any questions for Travis? Any others? Thank you, Travis. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
I didn't get my notes finished. I'll have them at the next meeting.
All right. Historic Preservation, Debra?
We met July 5th, Wednesday, 5:00 PM here at the Mueller Center. Present were Steve Weenya, Joe Muller, Pat Like, Brian Crawford, Christine Heidebrink, Cara Hagan, Scott Sogi, and myself. Guest present were Andrea Powers, representing Shedco. Andrea Powers, public discussion, talked about the need to secure grants, starting with a grant to form a steering committee to plan for later, larger grants. Under new business, Christine Heidebrink was introduced as the new member of the commission. Thank you for joining us. The need to fill the secretary position vacated by Mike Sommer was discussed. Scott indicated that Natalie Selner would be taking notes at the meeting but was unable to attend this meeting. Christine agreed to take notes if Natalie was not available. No plan was taken for the secretary position. See the height of the River Channel wall located next to the Inn by the River or the American Inn motel was discussed. Commission members want to look at the current wall first. Options will be looked at at the next meeting. Discussion about the Inn by the River, American Inn, 602 Sulphur Springs Street, putting up steel-covered awning without permit and a certificate of appropriateness. Scott will follow up on this and update the commission at the next meeting. Discussion about the Burnett House at 1729 Minicotta Avenue. Recent update on the outside stairway and deck without a permit and certificate of appropriateness. Scott will follow up on that and give us an update. And then another discussion about the old Upper Crust Building, Cafe Building at 627 North River Street. It's now at ease. And they have a new sign that has, does not have a permit or certificate of appropriateness. Everyone, you need to get certificates of appropriateness when you are in a historic district. Scott will follow up on that one as well. Cara Hagan talked about replacing windows at 445 North River Street. Windows will be the same size as the old ones and historic matched. Due to the time constraints with the contractor, an email vote will take place when the certificate of appropriateness is received by Scott and forwarded to the commission. Under old business, Steve talked about the possibility of the West River History Conference being in Hot Springs in future years. We adjourned at 6:43 PM. The next meeting will be August 2nd, 5:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Debra?
So, that certificate was accepted because I'm replacing the windows today?
Yes.
Okay. And another question is, do we still need to identify and talk to the Army Corps of Engineers if there's going to be any alterations to those walls?
It's my understanding that we cannot make alterations on that wall. Talking to Billy, our maintenance, he believes that the four-inch cement cap that's on that wall would be too likely to fracture if we put bolts into it. So, it is going to require putting up the posts in front of the wall. The design is what's being discussed too. Our old railings do not match code, but they are tolerated until we touch them. So, putting up a new railing, we have to match code to like 42 inches tall total. And we need vertical styles that are no further apart than four inches so little heads can't get in between them. And I sent forward to them the railing that's going to go up on the wall along the, from where the suspended sidewalk is going to end to Minicotta Bridge. There will be an attached addition on that wall that was approved by the Corps of Engineers. So, we potentially may be approving something that would match that. But we will have to come up with something that does not attach to that wall on top of it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Hey, Debra, what happens to businesses that don't get the certificate of appropriateness? For like a sign? Is that going to be a sticking point if they, I mean...
Well, potentially, they have to take it down. But usually, retroactively, they get approved.
Okay.
But they do have to do the paperwork and bring it in. But if there's something wrong with like the size requirements or it doesn't match historic preservation, then, you know, potentially, they have to take it down, spend that money and waste it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Debra.
Yep.
Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met July 13th at noon at the plunge. Present were myself, Chris Hansen, Akoya Zimiga, Tom Nas, Mara Smith. Also present were Gabby Martin, Recreation Director, and Hail Glanville, Ward 1 Alderman. Gabby presented an update on the summer swimming lessons. Lessons will be held at the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs from July 24th to August 3rd from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. Gabby will be present to check the students in and manage the lobby area. Monday and Wednesday, water aerobics classes will not meet during those two weeks. Upcoming budget hearings. It was highlighted, the budgetary items that they are asking for. And the council budget hearings will be July 25th and 27th. And in the review of monthly incidents presented by Akoya, there was zero incidents since our last meeting. Other, we will run an ad in the Senior Center Monthly Newsletter for a one-year period. We will highlight the Thursday $3 senior special that runs October through April and asked to be listed on their calendar. The next meeting will be August 10th, 2023, noon at the Evans Plunge. We adjourned at 12:45 PM.
Any questions for Linda? Thank you, Linda. Parks Recreation, Larry, Linda?
Next meeting will be August 2nd, 2:00 PM at the Mueller Center. Everybody is invited.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Debra?
Tomorrow, this Wednesday's meeting has...
Tomorrow, this Wednesday's meeting has been canceled due to nothing on the agenda, and the next meeting will be September, or no, August 16th, 7:00 p.m. City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Public Safety met on Thursday, July 6th at 2:00 p.m. here in the Mueller Civic Center. Members present are Alderman Bill, Lukens, Alderman JR Huddleston, Alderwoman Deborah Johnston, Mayor Bob Nelson, Chief Ross Norton, Officer Matthew Wendlin, Fall River County Engineer, Emergency Manager Frank Maynard, Fall River High School, or Hospital Compliance Manager Renee Staley, Luke Broyles, and Ryan Engel. Agenda was adopted as published. Communications from the public, crosswalk sign at 16th and University has been knocked down and removed. The south side of Jennings Avenue between the bump out and the first parking spot by the kitchen needs a barricade that is being used as a parking spot, and is blocking traffic. I believe it's not in here, but I believe a recommendation would be to draw lines in that area so people won't park there, or should be able to see that they can't park there and extend out into traffic. Update from the Police Department, Chief Norton introduced Officer Matthew Wendlin. He'd start an academy in November. We reviewed installation of one of the in-car computers. Man knows, they're cool. Those officers are going to be right up town now. It's really nice. Have to stop, go into the office, do two hours worth of report, and get back out on the road. They can start the reports from their vehicle. There were five members of the Police Department at close quarters combat, combative training on July 6th and 7th. We had three firework calls on July 4th. Discussed park bathroom unlocking and locking. In May, the P D responded to 413 calls, 61 of which were considered high-risk. Old Business, 21-15 house number project, next steps, working on the process to make the notifications and begin the corrective actions. Working on a process to send letters to the residents. 21-23 fuel reduction grant, it's on hold pending city administrator position being filled. 22-06 stop sign at Albany Street Alley, no parking on east side of the alley between Vision Source and Senior Citizen Center. We're waiting on resources to complete. New Business, members of the public were present to request additional stop signs and no through truck signs on 23rd Street at Jennings Avenue, as well as bridge load limit signs at 23rd Street and University, warning of the Minnacata Bridge load limits. There was additional discussion about relocating the speed trailer to 23rd Street. Learning moment, safety considerations associated with e-bike charging was discussed. We adjourned at 3:00 p.m. Next meeting is Thursday, August 3rd, 1:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center conference room. Subject to your questions.
Anything to add, Bill?
Nothing to add regarding the meeting, but I did want to let the council and the public know that we have finalized the deer access application form. Those should be available now at City Hall and the Police Department. Those applications can be completed and turned in at both City Hall and the P D up until August 15th. We've communicated that information to Brett at the Star Journal. We've expanded the hunting areas by one. One of the areas at Southern Hills Golf Course was quite large, so we broke that into two separate areas. One of the areas is, will encompass holes 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, and the driving range, and the other area will be 4, 5, and 6, and then hole 11. That's in addition to School Street Park and the City Brush Pile. Once you turn in your application, the drawing for the 75 permits will be held on August 16th. If you are successful in the drawing, orientation and training will be held August 23rd or August 30th at 6:30 p.m. at the City Brush Pile, at which time you will need to bring a check for $20 that we will receive after you successfully complete putting three out of four arrows in a nine-inch paper plate at 30 yards. At that orientation, you'll receive a list of do's and don'ts. If you, if you will, when you fill out your application, you will list your preferred sites, and if you receive a, if a permit to hunt on the golf course, that will be walk-in rules, just like any other state rule. So you will walk in, no vehicle. If you are successful in bagging your deer, you will drag it out by hand and take it to a location of your choice, not on city property, to field dress it. So, good luck. Brett, did we cover everything? Okay, thanks.
So I had a question. The deer that are going to be harvested during this, are they going to be donated to the food pan?
No, no. These are, this is not a special hunt. All this is, is you have to have a state archery permit.
Okay.
The only thing different is we are allowing you to hunt within the city limits of Hot Springs.
Okay.
So this is, you do whatever you want to with the deer that you harvest.
Okay. Question I had, were these going to be antler-less deer?
It's whatever you permit you buy. If you buy a $40 permit that allows you to harvest bucks or does, then you can harvest a buck or a doe.
Oh.
If you buy a doe-only permit, then that's what you'll harvest.
Oh, okay.
So this is archery hunting like anywhere in West River. It's just that you get to do it in one of the specified areas within the city of Hot Springs.
Okay.
All the rules of South Dakota game, fish, and park supply.
Okay.
If the successful hunter wants to donate the meat forward to Feeding South Dakota or whomever, it's entirely up to them.
Oh, okay.
Or they can retrieve it and keep it for themselves.
Yeah. This is different than any previous harvestings in the city, where maybe the city crews did it, and it all went to Feeding South Dakota. This is a personal hunt using a personal tag.
Oh, okay.
Good questions. Thank you.
Okay. Well, the questions were made to me, and I said, "I'll find out."
So thanks for sharing those questions. I'm sure we'll have more questions.
Okay.
Thanks for letting me share that.
I've got a question for Bill and JR, just to make sure I'm on the same page. The loading-unloading zone by the kitchen, okay, I was up to speed on that, but then I kind of, my brain cramped. Did you include the curb that goes in front of the kitchen across from the police station? Because people are parking there.
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're talking about, is that diagonal, the curb is actually at an angle. It's, I think, once the highway project is done, that will be painted as a no parking area. In the meantime, I think we're going to ask the state if they can put a barricade up there so that it's designated and obvious as a no parking zone, because people are parking, the vehicle sticks out into traffic, and it's causing a hazard.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Update on the house number project. Working with Natalie to identify the houses that don't have numbers. She's, has the list that was provided to us by the scouts, and she's working diligently to get those houses identified, the numbers, so that we can figure out who to send letters to, and she's done a draft of the letter that would be sent out. Working on that.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Public Works, Bill, Hal?
Okay. Public Works met on Tuesday, July 11th at 1:00 p.m. Present were myself, Alderman Glanville, Alderwoman Johnston, Mayor Nelson, Public Works Engineer Tracy Bastian, and Maintenance Department, Department Head Billy Morrow. Members of the public present were Kerry Pyle, Mary Burrows, Darian Wano, Wano, and Bob-
Engel, Bretson.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Under new business, a member of the public brought the following concerns to the committee. There's a concern about the height of the fire hydrant at Chicago Street and University Avenue in front of the Wells Fargo Bank. A replacement hydrant, the concern is the hydrant is too high, and if it struck, it would probably be hit above the breakaway flag. It may damage the valve below it. A replacement hydrant has been ordered. I was also concerned about a sewer cover at Lookout Drive in Minnacata is setting at an angle. The Street Department is aware of that and has been watching that. We looked at that, and it's a very slight angle it's been added to the work list. I also brought concern about hydrant caps on the hydrant at 16th Street at Mountain View Apartments and the east hydrant at Library Drive. These items were noted by the Public Works Engineer for communication to the Water Department. All of these items have been added to the Public Works Project list. Kerry and Mary and Darian provided an up, update to the committee regarding the community garden. I'm going to give you just a very brief synopsis of what they provided. This is the second year. They've had a double the number of plots. Right now, there's 30 plots in use. All of them are rented. They have room for 12 more spaces. There's classes being offered, and those classes are free due to a grant from South Dakota State University. There is a plot in the back that is being worked by all of the members, and that food is going to the local food pantry. First Interstate Bank has provided a grant for the purchase of a tool shed. All the members care for common areas within the garden space. They have five members of the steering, on a steering committee that manage the garden, and they have a lot of plans for growth. So it's, the whole community garden is going very, very well. She provided a list of just, there's an awful lot going on there. Under the Streets and Maintenance Department, they will be starting to replace trash cans in the completed portions of the road construction area. Discussed adding some dog bags along the Freedom Trail in a couple of spots where they're lacking, and Boardwalk Hill is now open for traffic. Members continue to support the city responsibilities associated with the road construction project, as well as their normal seasonal activities. And that's, statements is the same also for the wastewater and the Water Department. Regarding the Public Works Engineer, he's following the road project also at 115. There was to be a bid opening for the clubhouse retention wall, however, no bids were received. For code enforcement, Joel Johnson with Code Enforcement Specialist was in town last week to continue with inspections and coordination of notifications with city staff. For a 30-day look ahead for the departments, we've already talked about materials have been ordered for the Minnacata Bridge repairs, and those will be in place as, as staffing's available to do that. As traffic shifts on Chicago, work on the, for the Water Department will increase with service connections for those businesses on the east side of Chicago. As Tracy reported, the work on the Mueller Center has been going, and we saw that change And on code enforcement, the nuisance basement inspections and communications are continuing. As we've already stated, the work on Albany Avenue and Boardwalk Hill, that intersection was, that work on that intersection was completed on June 30th. And with that, I think the report is complete. Any questions or comments? Our next meeting will be August 1st, 1:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center.
Hal?
We adjourned at 2:00 p.m. Sorry.
Hal, anything you'd like to add?
No. Well done.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for Bill or Hal? Thank you, gentlemen. Southern Hills Golf Course Committee met on July 10th, 6 o'clock at the clubhouse. The ongoing work, they've placed a walking path on hole number 15 with the hopes it'll reduce slips and falls when accessing the lower area. Signs are being designed to help address moving from one hole to the other. For holes number, for carts going from hole number 12 to 13, from number 10 tees to number 10 green, going from 15 to 16. Cart's also going from one to number two. And for a while now, we've had problems with people urinating on the golf course. We've tried to address it less aggressively, and that hasn't worked out. It's very disappointing that grown men can't figure out that they wouldn't urinate in Centennial Park, but it's perfectly fine to do it on a golf course. It's just unfortunate that some of the property owners out there have been dealing with that. Apologize that we haven't got it managed sooner. But talked with Jason and Jill, and we're actually posting some signs that reference city ordinance about urinating in public parks, on public property, and that there is $120 fine associated with that. That will be placed on the offending tee box. Also putting up signs on the bathroom between 12 and 13 to let the folks know that that's their last opportunity to use a bathroom before they get to the clubhouse. Jill also printed up some cards to include with all of the scorecards that go out, letting people know about the ordinance and that urinating in public isn't something that responsible adults do. We'll see if that helps us out, getting to having people stop peeing on our golf course. Bill had mentioned the wall by the clubhouse. It was disappointing when we didn't get any bids. We expected at least one bid, and it turned out that that individual who had talked with Tracy to get all the necessary information for them to submit a bid, in fact, didn't submit a bid. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to get this done. Looks like we're going to focus on seeing if we can't get it done in-house, and that would be a combination of the golf course folks with the city folks. And as I keep saying, we are short-staffed when it comes to any additional help from the Street Department. We'll have the conversation and see what we can get fixed or figured out by, about We'll have the conversation and see what we can get fixed or figured out by, about getting that, that wall fixed. Keep talking with Jason to make sure that the wall isn't moving or failing anymore, that it's still safe. And he's currently satisfied that we have some time to get it taken care of. We'll figure out how we're going to do that. Any questions for Golf Course Advisory?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I bring up a concern from someone living on the golf course?
Yes.
So I'm going to, I'm going to read from the email. It says, "We live on the golf course," this is in Ward 2, "we live on the golf course. I believe our house is located adjacent to the 16th fairway. The fairway has a dog leg to get to the green. It is considered sport for golfers to attempt to shoot over our house to get to the green. The problem is very few golfers have that type of proficiency and our house is continually being hit. I understand that having your home hit by golf balls is a side effect of living on a golf course. I also understand that golfers may unintentionally have a shot that hits our home, but what is causing the problem is an intentional and deliberate attempt to shoot over our house and get onto the green." Such as from someone who's concerned, living on the golf course.
It's been a while since I played the back nine, so I'm trying to picture what they're talking about, but I believe I'm familiar with where it's at.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll talk with Jason about that and see what we can come up with.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Misty's not with us. She's not feeling well today, so we won't have a finance officer report. I don't have anything for you tonight, so that will take us to executive session. I get a motion to go in executive session?
I make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, 3 legal contracts.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. There won't be any actions taken after executive session. And Ariel and Garland, if you would join us?
I make a motion, we adjourn?
I get a motion to adjourn. I make a motion, we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.